In accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act of the state of New Jersey, adequate notice of this work session, regular meeting of the Franklin Township Council was made as required, indicating that this meeting would take place in the municipal building at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, September 9th, 2025.
We could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation following by Councilman Charles Oni-Jaka.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If there is to be peace in the world, there must be peace in the nations. If there is to be peace in the nations, there must be peace in the cities. If there is to be peace in the cities, there must be peace between neighbors. If there is to be peace between neighbors, there must be peace in the homes. If there is peace in the homes, there must be peace in the hearts. Amen.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilman Embarrasson.
Here.
Councilwoman Francois. Councilman Carrasi.
Here.
Mayor Kramer.
Here.
Councilman Oni-Jaka.
Yeah.
Councilmember Batasne.
President.
Deputy Mayor Udine.
Here.
Councilman Vasanella.
Here.
Councilman Wright.
Here.
We have several commendations and proclamations. Dr. Carrasi, Suicide Prevention Month 2025.
Thank you.
Nobody.
Several years ago, there was a young man.
Is that on?
Who, oops. It's okay. Okay. So several years ago, there was a young man in my neighborhood who committed suicide. And even now, when I am passing their houses, it really gives me so much sadness. But the suicide, believe it or not, every 11 minutes in the United States, somebody is committing suicide. Just to raise the awareness, we have a proclamation, I'd like to read it. Whereas suicide is a serious public health problem that affects individuals, families, and communities across the United States and here in Franklin Township, Somerset County, New Jersey. And whereas, according to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, suicide is the leading cause of death in the United States, with one person dying by suicide approximately every 11 minutes. And whereas, warning signs of suicide may include talking about wanting to die, looking for ways to kill oneself, talking about feeling hopeless or having no purpose, increasing use of alcohol or drugs, withdrawing from family and friends, and dramatic changes in mood. And whereas, effective suicide prevention strategies include promoting awareness, reducing stigma associated with mental health, and help-seeking behaviors, increasing access to mental health services, and fostering connectedness and support within our community. And whereas, Franklin Township is committed to supporting the mental health and well-being of all of our residents and recognizes the importance of creating a community where people feel comfortable seeking help when they need it. And whereas, by working together as a community, we can help prevent suicide and promote mental wellness for all of our residents. Now therefore, we Mayor Philip Kramer and Councilman Alex Carrasi, on behalf of the Township of Franklin, Somerset County, New Jersey, do hereby proclaim September 2025 as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in Franklin Township. We encourage anyone who is struggling with thoughts of suicide or experiences a mental health crisis to reach out to help by calling or texting 988 for the suicide and crisis lifeline, or by contacting local mental health resources. In witness, whereas, we have hereunto set our hands and caused the official seal of the Township of Franklin to be affixed this ninth day of September 2025, Mayor Kramer and Alex Carrasi. So, most of you probably know that about the Stigma Free Committee, and they have been doing a great job in promoting awareness about mental health problems. And I'm glad two of the representatives of that committee are here. I'd like to invite them to accept this proclamation. We have Mr. Pete Clark and Ms. Sarah Nasbit. Very, thank you.
and Safi Kallan, I want to thank Councilman Carrasi, Mayor Kramer, and the members of the Township Council for this special proclamation, which meets our mission statement about Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, which is part, as I said, of our mission statement. And again, our meetings are held on Wednesdays, third Wednesday of each month, at 6:30 in the Senior Center. So again, appreciate this, and we'll continue doing good work. Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Carrasi, you're continuing with Prostate Cancer Awareness Month.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this month, and next month actually, it's the Cancer Awareness Month. I believe there's another one that Mayor will be reading shortly, and next month is the BRIS Cancer Awareness Month. But today, I am going to be reading a proclamation about prostate cancer. And prostate cancer actually is among the leading causes of death in men, and it's important for all of us to be aware of the potential dangers of prostate cancer. Whereas prostate cancer is the second most common cancer among men in the United States, with approximately one in eight men being diagnosed with prostate cancer during their lifetime. Whereas African-American men face a disproportionately higher risk of developing prostate cancer and are more than twice as likely to die from the disease compared to men of other racial and ethnic groups. And whereas early detection through regular screening and consultation with healthcare professionals can significantly improve treatment outcomes and save lives. And whereas increased awareness and education about prostate cancer risk factors, symptoms, and the importance of regular medical examination are essential to reducing the impact of this disease and our community. And whereas, the month of September has been designated nationally as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month to promote education, encourage early detection, support research efforts, and honor those who have taught courageously against this disease. And whereas, Franklin Township is committed to supporting the health and well-being of all residents and recognizes the importance of raising awareness about health issues that significantly impact our community members. Now therefore, Philip Kramer, Mayor of Franklin Township, Somerset County, New Jersey, along with Councilman Alex Carrasi, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2025 as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month in Franklin Township. And we encourage all residents to learn about prostate cancer risk factors and symptoms, discuss a screening option with their healthcare providers, support family members, friends, and neighbors affected by prostate cancer, participate in community awareness activities and fundraising efforts, and honor the memory of those we have lost to this disease. In witness of, we have hereunto set our hands and caused the seal of Franklin Township to be affixed this ninth day of September 2025, Philip Kramer, Mayor Alex Carrasi, Councilman. So if you are men, especially 40 years or above, and if you have a loved one at home, which most of us do, and hopefully you do as well, please encourage them to be screened and get some health support. We don't want to lose any of our community members for prostate cancer. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone here to receive the Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month proclamation? So Deputy Mayor, perhaps you could read a couple of the whereases and therefore.
Sure. Okay. This is the proclamation for the ovarian cancer. Whereas ovarian cancer is the fifth-leading cause of cancer-related death among women in the United States. And the American Cancer Society estimates that in 2025, approximately 20,890 women will be diagnosed with ovarian cancer, and 12,730 will die from the disease nationwide, including an estimated 670 new cases and 340 deaths in New Jersey. And whereas a woman's lifetime risk of being diagnosed with ovarian cancer is approximately one in 91, and her lifetime risk of dying from the disease is approximately one in 143. And now therefore, I, Mayor Philip Kramer, and do hereby proclaim September 2025 as Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month in the Township of Franklin, New Jersey, and encourage all residents to participate in awareness activities, work heal and support, and engage in conversations that help save lives and support the thousands of families affected by this devastating disease. It witnessed the whereof, I have, what do you, I don't think we need to say that. That's all. Thank you.
I couldn't hear you.
I think that's all.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone here to accept the ADA proclamation and the Disability Voter Rights proclamation? Okay, we'll mail those?
Yeah.
And the ovarian cancer one? Okay. Next item is upcoming events. Well, I'll go first. We've got Franklin Day coming up this Saturday, the 13th. And I have a letter from Mr. LaCourte talking about the event, from the Franklin 250 point of view. This Saturday at Franklin Day, we proudly launch Franklin 250, our community celebration of the 250th anniversary of the founding of the United States. Franklin Township is older than the nation itself and played an important role in our country's history. Franklin is one of 200 victory towns in the United States and one of the only 20 in New Jersey, a distinction that makes our community's contribution to the Revolutionary War truly remarkable. At the municipal complex, 22 historic battle flags that once passed through Franklin will be on display, setting a powerful backdrop for the day. Visitors will enjoy the fife and drum group, History on the Hoof, joined by Matthew Respirito Resprepo, sorry, carrying General Washington's command flag, David Emerson portraying a Revolutionary War officer, George Luck as George Washington, and hopefully John Adams, and will be dressed in authentic periodic attire. Guests will take photographs with them and receive a keep-state copy of the Declaration of Independence. At the Franklin Day 250 tent, visitors can learn about the Revolutionary War skirmishes in Franklin and Manville, explore the Van Nuys Project through historic photos, and purchase a Franklin 250 commemorative coin designed by Kingston's resident Glenn McFarlane. All proceeds of that will go to funding other events at Franklin 250. We will be joined in this area by Somerset County Open Space, the Somerset County Cultural and Heritage Commission, and the Meadows Foundation, who will also share resources and information with the public. Finally, from 1:00 to 4:00 PM, Boy Scout Troop 154 will demonstrate the proper way to respectfully retire American flags. Residents are encouraged to bring their own worn and tattered flags to be honored in this meaningful ceremony. This is the only beginning of Franklin 250, many more events to come. On the behalf of the committee, Mr. LaCourte wanted to thank Stephen Dahl, Safi Kallan, and Krista Hodges for their support in helping bring Franklin 250 to life. Does anyone else have any events to announce?
Oh, Mayor?
Yeah?
I want to mention, there will be a grand opening of, well, in reference to what we were talking about tonight, the Municipal Council, Drug Alliance, and the Stigma Free Council have some overlap in their mission. And one of the things that they'll be doing is this grand opening Thursday, September 18th, 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And I'm looking for the address here, Mr. Vornlocker may know, but they are opening up the center.
Yep.
On Hamilton Street as a limited hours Franklin Recovery from Substance Use Disorders, basically to cover these issues we were talking about tonight, and there's some services by nonprofit from the county. I apologize, it's not on my information, Mr. Vornlocker may know where we're opening that up, but please come out and support it Thursday, September 18th, 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. It really will help provide so many so important services for people with addictions or dealing with suicidal tendencies, et cetera. And we're really blessed to have this in Franklin. I'm sorry, Mr. Vornlocker, if you had the address.
Yep, I'm working.
I know you're quicker on your feet than me.
I'm working on it right now, clicking around.
No problem. But that was it, Mayor. Thank you. Just wanted to make sure people knew about that.
The other councilmembers have an event to announce.
Just, oh, a lot of people do. So tomorrow from 6:00 to 9:00 PM, the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection has a hearing on the Northeast Supply Enhancement Project by the Williams Transco Company that the council has unanimously opposed many times previously, three times previously denied project to bring unneeded gas through two 16,000 horsepower compressors in Ward 1 in Franklin Township along Route 27 by the Buddhist Bahara. You can sign up in advance to testify, you just go njdp.gov/nes, and there's information there about the link to join, to pre-register, although pre-registration is not required. And we encourage as many people as possible to come and express their views on this project. It's really important for the public to be on record and share their concerns, and I know a number of people from council will be joining for that. And then separately, we mentioned the prostate cancer awareness, there is the Prostate Cancer Bike-A-Thon on September 20th that Shirley Spruill coordinates every year, it's a fundraiser for awareness and screening and more. If you're interested, I'm sure we can provide more information on that. By the way, it's very popular, and I don't know if our own Bill Bowman is biking this year, but I think recently he got onto the bicycle, and it's a, you know, covers a lot of the township, it's a really beautiful ride and a great cause.
Mr. Wright, you look like you had something. No?
I have one. Mr. Mayor, there is an event also in our township, is Hands Across New Jersey.
Microphone, please, Councilman.
What's that? I have it.
New York, come and connect.
Okay. So Hands Across New Jersey, and that generally follows the Route of Washington retreat from Fort Lee to Washington Crossing, and it's going to take place on September 17th from 4:30 to 6:30. And our township starts from Somerset Street, this is Route 27, and just goes on. So that's September 17th from 4:30 to 6:30 PM.
Anyone else? Mr. Manager, did you have any events?
I think council did an outstanding job of announcing all of the upcoming events, Mr. Mayor.
Say that again.
I think you did a fantastic job, Councilmember.
And just to, Mayor, I don't have the address, but Communities in Crisis, sometimes also referred to as CIC, and this will be the Franklin Hub, limited hours, but this walk-in center, and we will get the address soon as we can, but Communities in Crisis, a great nonprofit that's really very helpful in this situation.
It's on Hamilton Street, I believe.
It is. I'm trying to find the number, unfortunately, it's not on their website.
I have this. I have my municipal business.
Okay. It's like 873, is that what it is?
I thought it was 84.
884?
No, just 84.
No, it's not 84, that's in New Brunswick. We start in the 300s.
Stay tuned, we'll come up with that.
Stay tuned, I'll find it. It was on their website, it's not there.
I ask for unanimous consent to open to the public. Without objection, we're open to the public now. Anyone wishing to speak about anything to do with government.
873, that's what I thought.
May come up now, we have five minutes to speak, no yielding of time, may only come up once, please give your name and address. We do have later on a public session for second readings about the ordinance having to do with cat colonies, and one about the First Aid Squad, Franklin Somerset First Aid Squad. They will have dedicated times to speak, that doesn't mean you can't come up now, but there is a dedicated time for them to speak. Anyone wishing to speak?
I'll get it to. I'm telling you, my muscles.
I just wanted to ask.
Name and address, sorry.
Theodore Chase Jr., 159 Old Georgetown Road. I wanted to ask particularly the manager, what progress is there on a tree maintenance plan? This has, I think, been underway for at least two years and...
Permission to speak out of turn, Mr. Mayor, so we can end this one?
Sure.
Is that what your sole question is, Dr. Chase? So the Shade Tree Commission was provided with the updated version of the tree maintenance plan at their last meeting, and I believe they had more comments after the original one was sent back to the engineering firm to modify. So that, and that was at their last meeting, which I believe was last week.
Yes, and if I could just add to that.
Okay. So that's why I haven't yet heard about it from the Shade Tree Commission representative on the Environmental Commission.
So they have.
Because I'm very interested in getting more trees planted in the part of the township east of Franklin Boulevard, which has the lowest tree cover, tree canopy of any part of the township, but is well-populated and would be cooler if we could get more trees planted there. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Vasanella, you had something to add.
Yeah, I just wanted to let Dr. Chase know that we probably spent 45 minutes going through it line by line, and be honest, the first one, we were a little disappointed, this is definitely moving in the right direction. We did what we were tasked for, tweak it out how we thought it would better work for Franklin. And I'm hopeful by the next meeting that the Shade Tree Commission, not that they're the ultimate deciding factor, but that they will sign off and suggest, yeah, let's go with it, and I believe at that point, it will come to, well, either management or council to be put in as a policy procedure from there. But it's coming around, took a long time, it's coming around. And there are also, I'm not going to get into it now, some major projects in the pipeline having to do with the tree stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vasanella. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Javon Walker, 15 Coon Street. First thing I want to do is I want to thank Sergeant Rios. Sergeant Rios of the Police Department came to my house probably a couple weeks ago to notify me of a, it might have come from a grant, but it's like a program that he's trying to put my grandfather on, where it's kind of like a tracking watch for people with dementia in case they get away, in case they walk away, and you can be able to track your loved one on the phone prior to calling the police. So he had notified me that maybe the township had gotten a grant, and he was trying to get my grandfather on the list to be able to get one of those tracking devices. So as of now, we have a project lifesaver, but as for Sergeant Rios, I have to give him like an A+ and a lot of kudos for trying to get my grandfather on that type of program. And I'm just hoping that he'll be, he or the council or the township police department will be able to expand it so other people that have dementia or have a tendency to walk unattended will be able to get some kind of program like that. That's the first thing. And the second thing is, just want to give a big shout out to the Township Council again for the ovarian cancer and prostate cancer proclamation. Again, my grandfather has prostate cancer, he's had it for the last couple of years, and we do the best that we can by helping take care of him, make sure he gets his meds and stuff like that. But as for the prostate cancer itself, people my age and younger, and some, definitely African-American males a little bit older than me, they might not think that prostate cancer is something to really address or go to the doctor, get it checked out, and blah, blah, blah. But I just want to say definitely on record that it's vital to get checked up, there's no reason why you can't, and unfortunately, a lot of people wait too long in order to get checked out or to address it, but it's definitely a treatable form of cancer, and it's really important that a lot of people, regardless of gender, regardless of your race or ethnicity, to just get checked out. Definitely preventable in every way possible. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
I just have a couple of questions, I don't know if this falls on your purview or not, but warehouses in town, or any business for that matter, when they cut across the roadway and connect to the sewers or the water line or whatever the case may be, they leave craters. I mean, these holes are like such that when you hit them, your whole car rattles. So my question is, can anything be done to prevent them from leaving such a hole? Like at least smooth the road back to where it was? I mean, it may be bumpy or whatever, but to just leave it where you fall into this hole, and sometimes you get oncoming traffic crossing into the other lane because they know that hole is there and they don't want to hit it. So my question, can anything be done to prevent this, to at least have it where they can smooth the road out? My other question is, officially, I did an opere request. My other question is officially, I did an Oprah request about the usage of the gazebo. So I would want to know where officially is it written or the definition of a township event for use of the gazebo? Like who gets to determine if it's a township event? Is there something officially written where it says township event? Because when I did it, every township event was like, they didn't have to fill out the paperwork. No one knows who requested or anything. So I'm just curious about that information. And thank you for the September 11th ceremony. Once again, you guys did a great job with the Boy Scouts and the Police Department.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Just in time.
Good evening. My name is Denise Fernandez. I live 15 Curtis Trail in Martinsville, New Jersey. I right now take care of a colony of feral cats in Franklin Township behind Planet Fitness. 10 years ago, the manager, there was a serious problem back there, and they were looking for someone to get involved. I had never done this before. I reached out to someone who did rescue, and they actually directed me in the right direction. I got 28 cats out of there. I fixed them. I paid for it all on my own. I found them homes, except two of them which are still out there. In the past three years, I've had 14 cats dumped back there that I have been trying to trap and find homes for as well. My question to you is, I saw the ordinance, and I don't have a problem with registering the cats there. I don't have a problem with any of that. My question to you is, if people are dumping cats and someone comes by and sees that one of the ears are not tipped, am I going to get fined for it? Because it happens all the time. Literally 14 cats have been dumped on me in the last three years. Three years ago, it was two cats. Last year, six kittens, a mother, and this year, three cats. So that is my question to you, is if somebody drives by there and says, oh, these cats' ears are not tipped, am I the one who's going to be fined for it?
We'll answer the questions at the end of public session.
Okay. Okay. So that's my only thing. But I, literally, I've gotten 28 cats out of there. So I'm trying, and there's a lot of us out there that are trying to do good work, but there's not a strong TNR program in this township. I don't live here. In Bridgewater, we have an amazing TNR program. You catch a cat, they fix it. It's released, you sign a paper, you're responsible for that cat. So I, maybe there's not the means in this township to do that, but I think it's something maybe perhaps you guys could talk about or maybe consider doing in the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Myra Barrows. I am a resident of Franklin Township. I live at 5 Azalea Lane. I was volunteer second chance in the shelter when I was able to do so for personal reasons. I'm a caregiver for my mother who has cancer and Alzheimer's. Just me and her live alone. I wasn't able to continue to do that. I want to say that I have supported colonies in the past in this town. And they were colonies that were abandoned for several years. I met other women, we were taking care of those colonies. I myself, in 21 years that I've been a resident of Franklin Township, have brought into my home 15 feral cats that never had to go through that shelter. And as Denise says, the issue is that we do not have a TNR program. There may be areas out there that maybe some people aren't doing the right thing, or maybe they don't know how to do it, but it's not, it's not easy. And we do need help, and we do need a program. And we do all this on our own dime and at our own expense, and it takes time to take these cats in. You know, they're just animals trying to survive. And by the way, the land that these cats were on, you know, there's people going there and drinking, making it dirty, loitering, throwing garbage. Well, guess what? Me and my friends would go and clean all that up for the town because we didn't want to cause any issues or cause any evidence. So we're just asking you to have some compassion. When my caregiver journey is over, I will resume to try to help those animals further and to continue to support the animal shelter. So thank you for your attention.
My name is Tamar Tier. I live in 121 Upper Kingtown Road in Pittstown, New Jersey. I used to live in town. We ended up moving out west because we needed bigger space. I run a rescue. Prior to running a rescue, it started by, I do a lot of TNR. I do a lot of animal care. My rescue Beacon of Hope is actually out in Bridgewater. And just to let you guys know, a lot of those cats that we're trying, and I'm in good relationship with Katie, the manager at the shelter here. There's a problem where a lot of people come to me and they really want to help, but they cannot fund all this spay and neuter. We have a huge community wanting to help, and I really want to know if the town, like some other towns, be willing to discuss funding and do a TNR program where I have trapped, I have rescued well over 1,000 cats, hundreds and hundreds been adopted. Those who are not adoptable, the problem with feral cats, which are not allowing human contact, I mean, you can feed them, but they do not want touch, they don't know anything else other than where they came from. And I would love to educate people about the positive of having feral cats, as long as they're fixed and vaccinated, they're not going to reproduce, they're not gonna, if you feed them, they don't go to people's trash and try to cause trouble, they just want to survive. They do take care of the rodents. And I've asked Katie before about a TNR program. You know, as a rescue, I get rescue prices, which is less than what the average person here would pay. And it's a lot of money. And I would love to have the community, and I've done, I've lived in town for a few years. My husband lived here for over 20 years before we moved out. I would love to help this town, and I have people to trap, and we take to the vet, we get them fixed, we get all the paperwork. And I just hate the fact that we're treating feral cats like just annoying cat that poops here and, you know, gets everybody sick, and it's so false. And I don't know what can be done about having the township work with people willing to donate their time, like myself, my rescue is 100%. I get paid nothing. I volunteer full-time for my rescue. I would love to have help by the community and the township that we can do good. And from experience, I will tell you that when you have a colony and they're fixed and they know their feeding time and they come and they eat, they don't stay, they don't go far, they know they're safe, we do try to get them to as much, you know, as many safe places as possible, be it a horse farm or places that can, would like to have cats in their house, you know, in their, on their property. But those that we do not have places for, I don't want, like, I don't want people to know locations. It's unsafe because people who don't like cats do a lot of harm. And I could tell you terrible stories, which is why we don't want to publicize where we have the feral cats living. It's not safe for them because they have been poisoned, they have been shot arrows, you know, arrows through them, they've been road kills. So I would love to work with you guys. As I said, I run a rescue, and if you are willing to work with us where you cannot, you know, provide some finances so the town people can go and trap and bring it to get fixed, that would resolve in, result in a lot of lives saved by not being born. Food for thoughts, and I'm hoping to be able to work with you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Christine Robinson, 86 Runyon Avenue. I'll be brief, and I'm nervous, but I just want to also be representative of the animal rescue community here in town. I'm not going to repeat exactly what was already said, but we are just concerned about the welfare both of humans and animals alike. Two points that I'll just reiterate regarding the ordinance that's bringing it to you this evening. I want to thank everybody for the attention to, you know, the health and welfare of everyone. Understanding that rabies is very much in the news these days. There's a lot of animals in the tri-state area that are being infected. So I do obviously advocate for the vaccinations. There is the concern about funding, like was stated. Will we get help from the town? Because this is all coming out of our own pocket in any fundraising that we do currently. And also regarding the registration for the colonies themselves, while I understand that it's important to be mindful of the animals that are here, if things are registered with the township or even animal control, if the whereabouts are public record, then that could be, you know, very concerning for not only the animals, but people like myself who take time out of their day, sometimes early in the morning, to take care of the animals. Because it's really amazing how many people actually don't like it. And I've been accosted, I've been stuff thrown at my car, I've been chased, and as a, as a young female, it's a little frightening. So I just would hope for some protection, not only for the animals, but for us as well. Thank you again for, you know, taking, taking this into consideration and appreciate the time.
Anyone else? Seeing none, I ask for unanimous consent to close public portion. Hearing no objection, public portion is closed. Mr. Bornlocker, why don't you answer the non-cat questions? I think they were appropriate for you.
There's been so many cat questions that I lost track of the non-cat questions.
The warehouse putting silver lining...
So as far, as far as Mrs. Lawson's question about road repair, so the process that go, that everyone goes through is, whether it be a county road, a state highway, or municipal road, is a street opening permit is issued, a bond is posted, and the utility or contractor is granted permission to open the road. When roads are repaired after utility work is done, initially, there isn't a final repair done because generally, we allow for six months of settlement in the trench and then it be recompacted so that it's a permanent repair, rather than making the permanent repair that then just sags as a result of settlement. When you open up the earth, and, you know, most of these trenches are at a minimum four feet deep and so much deeper, so you have to allow for that settlement compaction, and then you come back and you remove the temporary pavement, recompact it, and then do your final course of paving. If you have a specific area, you should be bringing that attention to the jurisdiction for whom that road is under the responsibility of. For instance, if your complaint is Elizabeth Avenue, then you should be bringing that complaint to the Somerset County Road Department. If your complaint is Route 287 or Route 27, you should be bringing it to the Department of Transportation. If your complaint is some municipal road, you should be bringing it to the attention of the Public Works Department. You don't need to come here. You can just simply, in fact, there's a form which we've talked about many, 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 many times on the website for the reporting of some sort of roadway deficiency, be it a sign, pothole, or what have you. It's right on the homepage, and there's a button, report, report a problem with your road, and that's how you can report it to us. If there, and also, though, if it is a county road, information is available on that link for the contact information for those other authorities if the road belongs to them, and they're the permit holder. Okay? So that's, that's where that one goes.
Gazebo of township events.
Gazebo. So, I mean, I think it's, it's almost self-apparent, right? A township event is one that is sponsored by the township. If our recreation department, our cultural arts council, all organizations that are either part of municipal government by way of a department or by way of a committee or commission, if they're sponsoring an event at the gazebo, it's a, it's a township event. If there is some outside organization sponsoring the event, then a permit process has gone through for them to rent the gazebo. I mean, and there's an ordinance that governs that. In fact, it is a municipal, in the municipal code, and the ordinance is called Municipal Gazebo. And so that's where that information lies. But if the recreation department, cultural arts, police department, whoever might be sponsoring an event at the gazebo is part of municipal government in some fashion, then it's a municipal event. I don't know that I can be any more...
I'll just tag on to that. I've been involved in some private events at the gazebo, and I have paid cash, well, not cash, I've paid, written a check and paid for it because it's not a township event, it's a private event. Before we discuss the cat issue, which we're going to discuss later, how many people are here for the cat issue? If you could just, okay. So I'd like to make a motion, rather than have them sit through the rest of what we, that we amend the agenda to move the, I hate calling it the cat ordinance, but the cat ordinance...
Second that, Mayor.
Okay.
I'm sorry, moving it to now, I thought you were going to say. I apologize.
No, you, you...
Read your mind.
Yep.
Okay. I'll second that motion. Thank you.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. So some of you may have been holding back, waiting for that time to speak, so let me go to the ordinance. So this is the second reading of the ordinance. First readings are when we introduce it to the world. Second reading, if it makes it that far, is when we decide whether we're going to pass it or not. Ordinance 4471-25, an ordinance amending the municipal code of the Township of Franklin County of Somerset, State of New Jersey, where particularly Chapter 115, Cats and Other Animals, with amendments to Article 1, General Provisions, and Article 2, Dogs and Cats, and the addition of Article 7, Wildlife, and Article 8, Free Roaming Cats, is presented for public hearing and final adoption. The public hearing has been noted as required. I ask for unanimous consent to open to the public. Hearing no objection, we are open to the public again. So by the rules, the people who already spoke, you can speak again because you played the game right. Anyone else, anyone, anyone wishing to speak on this subject only, please come to the mic. Same rules apply, time and no yielding of time, et cetera.
Valerie Martelli, Crab Apple Lane, Franklin Park. I appreciate the comments that have been made before, the past speakers, and their care about these animals that they're taking care of. But I love animals, too. I have spoken with Katie at the animal shelter for years about taking care of the animals, all animals in our township. And I think that this ordinance, as proposed, does not really disrupt anyone from caring for these cats in a proper way by allowing them to have these colonies registered, having specific rules about feeding these cats, so that there is not a problem for other animals and humans within the community, and it doesn't create a nuisance. So I think it's a very fair regulation. Any question that previous speaker may have had should be addressed regarding people dumping additional cats into an already existing colony where the cats are spayed and neutered. That is a fair question. The other thing I would like to point out to the advocates is that there needs to be more education about people not letting their cats out of the house. And if they have a cat that they think that is going to get out, that cat should be spayed and neutered. The cat should be vaccinated. The reason, I think, and I've seen this in my own community where cats get dumped, is because they see a colony that's already existing, and then they think it's okay for that cat to live outside. And it's a horrible life for those cats, and those cats should not have to endure that. So thank you again for your consideration, and thank you for your careful crafting of this ordinance, which I think helps everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? You can line up.
Theodore Chase Jr., 159 Old Georgetown Road. I feel I've learned a good deal about the care of cat colonies already from prior speakers, and I thank them for that. I came to speak primarily from a point of view of the birds because the American Bird Conservancy says that each year, millions of wild birds are killed by outdoor cats. And I therefore strongly endorse the previous speaker's instruction to keep the cats indoors. And I think there should be very... And I think there should be very strong inclination to, toward finding homes for these cats, rather than continuing to leave them living in the wild, where they will kill birds, even if they're fed by people that are taking care of, of them and putting food out on plates. I'm sure that it's not possible to find home for all of them, but there should be as much attention to finding homes for them where they can be kept inside and hopefully loved as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello again, Rob Johnson, 15 Lion Lane. Thank you for your work on this. And what's been lost in the ordinance, and I'm just as guilty as anybody else, is that the ordinance also addresses animal feeding in general. In my homeowners association, we've had plenty of instances of people feeding, leaving out peanuts, nuts, what have you, and attracting squirrels and other rodents, and causing infestations. So, you know, that's also part of the cause of this. And, you know, I, you know, I had a cat, I had cats for 30 years. But the problem is, what's going on in my community where, where I am, is that the people who are feeding the animals, cats, this time, cats, have not asked for permission to be on the properties that they're going on. They're dumping the food onto the association's property, they're leaving dozens of empty bowls of water, that, you know, they're just sitting there. And, you know, a lot of this could, I just, when I addressed these people, I just wanted, you know, I, I wanted the association to be able to avoid having to, you know, remove the cats themselves, and, you know, become more of a problem, because in the end, with feeders we have in the units, you know, it compounds the situation. And we've had people complaining about the smell and everything, and nobody has, you know, volunteered, nobody's addressed the actual damage that's caused, that other people are stuck paying. So that's really not fair to the other people involved, not, actually, people that aren't involved. So, but, you know, thank you for the work, and, you know, I think the colony aspects of the ordinance are, are fair. You know, it's not actually what I was after, but seems good enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thanks again for, for your time. Christine Robinson, 86 Runyon. I just want to address some of the comments that were made, all valid points. Most of the cats that are outside, if not all of them, are considered feral. Feral means they don't like humans, they're not qualified for adoption, they won't be your lap cat, they're not really available to be in your home. Franklin Township Animal Shelter is already overwhelmed. You go in there any given day, and they're packed with animals. The adoption rate is very low. So while it would be ideal to get homes, or shelters, or barns even, for these animals, it's really not likely. So what the best solution is, is to TNR in place, get the animals sterilized, the smell will go down. And also, removal of these colonies is not wise as well, because when there is an established set of cats in the area, it will deter other animals from filling the gap. The truth is, we're not gonna solve the fat, the feral cat crisis. You see it everywhere, you see it in New York City, you see it all over the place in, in America. But if you keep a sterilized group of cats there, they will eliminate other animals from encroaching the area. One other thing I want to mention is, while I have heard the same thing about the birds, and how there's a, there's an issue with the natural wildlife there, the truth is, if we don't feed the cats, they will starve. They're not out catching squirrels and birds on a daily basis. So we do see it on a firsthand basis, so we can very clearly speak to that. Those are really the, the main topics I want to address, but I do agree that, you know, vaccination, like I said, is very critical. Making sure that the animals are sterilized and ear tips is very critical, and I appreciate the council's time with this matter. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm back. Tamara Tier, 121 Upper Kingtown Road, Peach Town, New Jersey. I just listened to what my, the other speakers had said, and I wanna just, again, as we reiterated, education is key. For those who don't understand cats, a single cat can give birth at six months of age. A litter could be anywhere from one to seven, and they can reproduce every few months. If you take away the babies, they get pregnant again. Basically, it's, it's astounding amount of kittens born unless we actually get them fixed. As I said, I spent, I cannot even tell you how many hours, days, weeks, months, years, trapping cats, getting them fixed, and actually following up with a managed colony. A managed colony is one that we feed them, we keep up with, if they're sick, we take them, we retrap them if we're successful, unless they're very, you know, it's hard to retrap a cat that was trapped. But if they're sick, we manage to, we take it to the vet, we either euthanize if they're really sick, or we get them well. We manage them, we make sure that they're, the sick ones get removed. That's what managed colonies are. Those cats that everybody's talking about, and I can tell you, so many places I've done in, in Franklin, Somerset, anywhere, there are so many cats, and I try to help certain location by trapping them, fixing them, and I, I, you know, I, I must have, again, over a thousand cats, I must have trapped, fixed. Thankfully, I raised some funds because they're on a rescue, people donate some money, my adoption for some successful, for friendly cats. We can help that situation. And, and by trapping, by getting them fixed, the amount of cats actually reduced, because they don't reproduce. And once they die, they die. They don't grow new ones. So instead of trying to starve them to death, starvation is a horrible way to die, or diseases, those are ways you don't want them to die, then I would like to see a way where we can actually manage them, fix them, watch them, get them fed. Every place eat at their own time, some places, they won't come out until late, when it's dark and quiet, other places, they come in the afternoon, other places, they come in the morning. So it's hard to say, well, at 5:00 we're feeding, and they're coming. You know, it's like kitty cat, it's dinner time. You know, we, they show up or they don't show up. But feeding them is critical, because I have seen starvation, I've seen them die out of, like, having this temper. I want them out because this temper is very contagious. And so trying to keep them safe and remove the sick ones out of the way, we can coexist. I mean, well, they coexist, and I think we can coexist as well, if, again, education. And we have plenty of education for anybody who's interested to learn about stuff. I'm sure Katie in the, in the shelter might have education, I can provide education, I would love to have volunteers helping me out, save, help out some animals. I'm sure plenty of you have dogs or cats. I don't wanna find that, I have taken some from bad situations in New Brunswick into my home, I acclimated them in a shed, and now they live outside in my yard. I do not have dead birds or dead squirrels. I, it happens, some of them do like to chase, but, you know, I, I do have dead rodents that they leave me as gifts. I don't like it, but it's there. But that way, I don't have them at the house, the rodents, that is. It's, it's not as bad as people think it is, and I'd love to show them otherwise, so you guys don't have that really bad taste about feral cats being just nuisance. Time's up almost, and I'm done. Thank you. And thank you for bringing it up.
Good evening. Brenda Jackson, Onzeuka Court. I have a problem where I've seen this particular cat, a black cat, constantly on my property. I've seen, and I'm not saying it's coming from that cat, I have found dead squirrels and mice in my flower beds. Now, I don't know what happens, you know, with these, and I have also, I've seen another cat roam around in my area, and I'm in an HOA as well. And so how do you get rid of them cats? I don't know, and it doesn't have a collar on it, so I don't know if it belongs to someone, they took the collar off it, and they just let it go, I don't know. So how do we deal with that? That's one question. And the second is, if you approve this, who, where does the funds come from for this program?
Anyone else?
My name is Christopher Blone.
Can you just be closer to the microphone?
Sure. I live at 3503 Sunny Slope Road, Ridgewater. And I'm here as a subject matter expert. I am the executive director of tnr.org, we're a local cat rescue. Actually, we were founded in Somerset. We're now based out of Raritan. And I'm also a New Jersey Animal Control Officer, ACO number 3254. Our organization has carried out TNR within Franklin Township. We also have regularly instructed and assisted residents with feral colony management. I guess a couple of points that I wanted to hit on with the proposed amendment, the impracticality of a one-hour feeding window. On paper, this may sound pretty simple, but in reality, I believe it to be unworkable. Cats are not alike people, they do not all line up and politely eat together. Colonies awful, excuse me, colonies often include cats with very different personalities and have complex social dynamics. Some cats are shy or bullied by more dominant cats. Others simply do not eat well in the presence of rivals. You have unutored male cats that will chase away more submissive cats. So it creates an issue if you're trying to squeeze them into a one-hour time period. If you put out food, in my observance, at colonies with, let's say, 10 cats, they don't eat together, rarely at all. You'll have one cat coming at a time. Then, at most, you'll see two eating together. Of course, if the, you know, there are colonies that the cats get along well together, and they will eat together, but that's more rare. So instead of solving the problem, this creates new welfare issues. The next point I want to touch upon is, I believe this ord, amendment has an unfair burden on responsible caretakers. The ordinance prefaces a unrealistic and unfair burden on the very people who are managing colonies responsibly. Those are the people we should be looking to emulate and kind of lift up, and instead, look at the people that are doing things wrong. A responsible colony caretaker, they're following best practices, providing clean water, monitoring cats' health, they're keeping the feeding stations clean. This is something that, again, is in TNR best practices. A feeding station should be kept clean, there should no, there should be no accumulation of plates or food containers. They should be removed minimum daily, for the health of humans and for cats. Beyond that, I guess my concern is that this is, again, punishing the people that are doing things correctly with rules that seem a bit impractical, and has the potential with the threat of fines to scare off people that are doing things the right way, who, again, we should be looking to collaborate with, rather than scare them off with extreme feeding restrictions. Lastly, the ordinance talks about sheltering feral cats, or at least them coming into the shelter. Just to be clear, taking cats into, excuse me, taking feral cats into a shelter amounts to a death sentence. Between 70 and 90% of cats, feral cats that enter an animal shelter are euthanized. The reason why is there's no place to put them. They're not suitable candidates for pets, and you can't just put them anywhere outside. They have to go back to the original place. So again, taking them into the, yeah, that's a problem. In closing, I just would just re, suggest working with stakeholders in the community rescues that cooperate. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Gina Lowe. I'm at 167 McNair Court, which is a HOA. I'm a private citizen doing cat rescue on my own. I learned a lot a few years ago volunteering for a rescue in Milltown, New Jersey, Crummer Cat Rescue Society. And through that society, I developed a lot of relationships, acquired a lot of education, and also spread that education. I'm no longer volunteering with them because of my work schedule, but I am on my own doing rescue. And I'm not here to reiterate anything that the ladies before me had said, they said it really well, the gentlemen before me. I wholeheartedly agree that for us who have to dig into our own pockets and trap these cats, feed these cats, get vet care on our own without any financial help, it's a financial burden, it's a burden that we put on ourselves, but we do it because we're animal advocates, because no one else is doing it. I probably am correct in saying that a lot of animal rescues, many times, you probably feel alone, not supported, and there are other issues that, you know, get a lot of attention, but, you know, being called the crazy cat lady, you know, things like that, that stigma. I think we need to take that away, and through that, it's education and information and working together, and not putting an additional TNR ordinance or scrutinization on us private citizens who are doing our best to control the population. Yes, cats do make a mess, but so do dogs. I can't tell you how many times I've found dog waste on my property, yet nobody talks about that. And yet, here I am, cleaning that up, in addition to caring for my cat colony, and also trying to donate whatever money I have to the shelter, and to other TNR groups on Facebook where they're pleading for help with a cat who needs surgery, but they can't afford it. I recently donated $200 to a lady out in Kansas, because she couldn't afford $45 for seven cats to get them spayed, neutered, vaccinated. It's $45. Here in New Jersey, I easily would have paid probably $200 a cat by taking them to People for Animals. So community, working together, education, support, recognition, taking away that stigma, I think that's really crucial here. Yes, I do think we do need some sort of guardrails, but if we can reconsider the ordinance here with the one-hour window, the fines, relax some of that, maybe take some more time to think about that, that would be really appreciated. And I really do appreciate you letting us speak here, this is my first meeting, and just having heard the energy in the room and the fairness you've given to us, I look forward to attending future meetings in the future, and getting to know all of you, and perhaps getting more involved. Obviously, I'm not a speaker, but I do have a lot of passion for certain topics. I've been a resident here for five years. I'm really glad I moved here, I went to Rutgers, but ultimately, during COVID, I landed here, and I've, through social media, working, walking through the neighborhoods, I've felt the sense of community, and in this room, I feel it as well, so thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, I ask for unanimous consent to close public portion. Without objection, public portion is closed. First, I want to thank everyone for being so civil about this. First, I want to thank everyone for being so civil about this. I've seen discussions such as this get quite out of hand, and no one did that. And I actually promised myself I wasn't going to respond. I would just call for the vote, but I do want to respond to some of it, and perhaps other council members will. First, I want to ask the township attorney, would it be okay for us to redact location of the colony from Oprah requests? Is that possible?
Yes, because you could redact it if there's a security concern.
Sorry, microphone, Lou, so.
The answer is yes. You can redact it if there's a security concern. Correct.
Okay. So if we pass this, you are so instructed, Madam Clerk.
Mayor, do we need to amend the ordinance, or is it just a given? Okay.
You don't need to amend the ordinance.
So.
Thank you.
If we were to remove the one-hour restriction, would that be, so the restriction is that you can only, you have to, can only leave the food down for one hour and then have to bring it up? Is that a substantive change?
I don't believe so, Mayor.
Okay.
Do you just want to remove it completely?
We, I'm not, I'll let others make that motion. So, sorry, I'll make.
Mr. Vola?
So I'll let others make that motion. I just want to know if that would require reintroduction, and you're saying no. One correction about what people said out there. There is an ordinance about dog waste, so that is something we consider. And I would just like to say, you and you, if I could write an ordinance saying, "Do what they do," then I, that's what I would do, but he won't let me. I have to be more specific. That's what we're kind of trying to do, is have people be responsible, because there are people out there feeding cats at their porch on their condo, and they're walking across other people's porches and doing what cats do. And you guys are trying, you know, you guys are taking them to your home, you're bringing them to the vet. That's one thing that we ask for, so I commend you. And if everyone were doing that, we wouldn't need this ordinance. The last thing I'll say before I let other council members speak. So when I first got on council, I was the liaison to the Public Health Advisory Committee, and we went over the idea of trap, neuter, and release, and I'll hear me out. I was not impressed with the literature at that time. Now, that was 15 years ago, so perhaps Mr. Karazi, Dr. Karazi, maybe you want to review that as to whether we want to, and the committee could make an advice to the township as to whether we should take up that program, look at it again. That's my request, not my command.
Mr. Mayor, might I just add to that, because I think it's important, because I did do a tremendous amount of investigation back then when I was overseeing the animal shelter, and I've done it again now regarding TNR programs. And every single successful TNR program at a municipal level has a volunteer organization that is responsible for that TNR program. Here in Franklin, we have Second Chance for Animals, and Second Chance for Animals back then, 15 years ago, and again recently, have expressed that they do not want to be responsible for a TNR program. So in addition to the idea of a TNR program here in Franklin, an organization would need to step up and be responsible for it, and none has done that to date. No one has said, "We will be the organization that does all of these things that we spell out in this ordinance that's being considered tonight." Be responsible for ensuring veterinary care. Be responsible for being, you know, for maintaining the colony, right? That's what we're talking about here. And I just, I want that to be clear here tonight, that we have done all of those things. I was the person overseeing the shelter 15 years ago when you looked into it. And at that time, no one wanted to be responsible for a TNR program. And the issues that with, with TNR programs is while they may be successful, where the people who are doing it are doing it according to the standard practices of a TNR program, we have a bigger issue here. And that issue is that people are doing this outside, kind of rogue, so to speak.
Right.
And we have no control over those, and we can't bring those into, into accordance with any, any standard practices.
I agree, and that's why this ordinance.
And that's what I'm saying, but I think the Advisory Board of Health should certainly consider it again, but before there's any sort of commitment to it, there needs to be an organization that says, "We will do this," and we have not had that happen.
Okay. Good. The last thing I'll do is point out that four people sitting up here perform weddings and have at one time or another taken the money that we get for weddings and donated to the animal shelter. Every time I do a wedding, I don't know, I've done five, 600, $50 goes to the animal shelter. So it's not like we don't care about animals here. Any other council members have a comment? Don't feel obligated.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'm glad you brought up those. They're the only two, I'm going to say, areas that were a little new, and I did want to question, so thank you. And the follow-up on the one, the one, for people, if I'm understanding it right, it can be deemed by our town to be a safety issue. It can be redacted, the address of a colony. The other issue, and the person, yes, thank you, Councilman. The other question for the attorney is the one hour, the way the ordinance is written, can that hour be repeated in, within a 24-hour period so they could have multiple one-hour feedings? Or, and I'm not against going the way the mayor mentioned, changing or amending it, but as it stands, can that one-hour segment be repeated by the registered cat colony person?
Just reading it now.
Yeah, no, I know, and that's kind of like a catch-22 question, but I do think we should consider.
Mr. Attorney, it doesn't deem it within a 24-hour period. It just says that it can only be left out for an hour, period.
So if the people taking care of the cats, trying to make this practical for the people that are willing to go through the effort, and I feel a lot of sincere energy in this crowd tonight, for what that's worth, they could go and feed again in the afternoon. They know they have other cats that are scared off for coming back, so not, so I want to be hopeful here with that issue, but it sounds like maybe it's already written in, if I'm understanding the concerns tonight.
It's not once every 24 hours.
No.
It just says, you just can't leave the food out.
Can't leave it out for longer than an hour.
Can't leave it out continuously, or for more than an hour. So I think it may. We can't invite anybody else up to speak at this point, or, well, that's the mayor's prerogative, but I think that would cover, at least for me, what was the other concern. And we're threading a needle here, but I think we're doing it well. So, Mayor, that's all I.
Anyone else?
I have one comment I'm going to make in the amendment to strike the one hour. This cat issue, first, I want to thank the council, because the animal feeding ordinance has been for some time deliberated, and I think the council members have been very judicious in hearing from lots of different stakeholders on concerns with different proposals and have, you know, maintained a tremendous amount of flexibility and patience and understanding and compassion. We're really trying to find a way to address concerns around feeding, but also those that want to care for cats. And so to all of you who do that, I want to say personally, from my perspective, thank you. I have two, I call them garbage cats. They almost were feral. I adopted them at 10 days old from a composter on my house, and I thought for sure mom would come back chip and fin. They live inside with me. They're wonderful, but I wouldn't want them to starve. And so the council also looked at this adoption, based on what happened in a neighboring community in Hillsborough, and that way, folks that wanted to responsibly take care of their cats had a vehicle to do that. So it's trying to find that balance. Some problems still exist. It's not perfect, and we're hearing you around, you know, sufficient trap, neuter, release programs and the financial burden that puts on families. And I think there's some willingness for the health, I forget what it's called, the Advisory Board of Health.
Advisory Board of Health.
Advisory Board of Health to talk about that, but the advertisement is we would be looking for nonprofit allies to work on that, to add capacity, and that could be some new entity or an existing entity. So, you know, my information is here. You can find my email address. I've spoken with Danielle at Tabby's Rescue and Whiskers Rescue and TNR.org and lots of different folks, and your commitment and patience and education that you've done on this issue has been tremendous, and it's not falling on deaf ears in any sort of way. It's very important. We want to get it right, and there's still opportunities to sort of move through this and make it even better from today. So just know that whatever happens today is not necessarily the end of the story. I would like to just request, like, at least in a year that we come back and look at the ordinance and see how it's, it's working, and, you know, I think this council will be very open to revisiting any deficiencies or adding in any clarifying pieces to that. With that being said, you know, the TNR will be a further conversation for how we can support those efforts and make a system that works, and look at the literature again and make sure within our borders that it's achieving the mission, which is, you know, making sure the cats aren't able to continually reproduce and continually make up what we might consider a problem, but it's also a beautiful creature. So with that being said, I move that we strike in 115-95A from the following words, "Food shall only be left outdoors for a period not exceeding one, in parentheses, one hour, and all extra space there, plates slash bowls shall be removed slash discarded after one, (1) hour feeding period." That would be the strike, and then it would leave the sentence, "Food must be allowed, must be on a plate slash bowl and not scattered on the ground." So it would just strike the one-hour provision.
Do we have a second?
This, just to, yeah.
A second on the amendment. So we have a second. Any discussion?
So I'll just specify, this is not saying that feeding is okay. This is if you adopt a colony that you're feeding, that the one-hour timetable is non-existent.
That, Councilman, I think that just, this provision, this is one of the health provisions in this. So the problem, the problem is, is that you take a bucket, you fill it with cat food, and you leave it outside. You don't have any ability, if you're not taking it in and out, you're not monitoring it, you don't have any ability, you don't know, it's going to attract everything that's going to feed it, and I think that that's the problem. It's that, it's, this is, you know, one of the health-related features of the ordinance, so that's the concern. The concern is that just leaving food out, it attracts all kinds of animals. I mean, I think that that's.
And that's absolutely true, and I think that one of the largest complaints that we have when it comes to the feeding of these cat colonies is that it's a, they, the people who are feeding them come out, they leave the food behind, and, and they leave, and they leave it unattended. So, so the answer is, that, that was already described in this, is that it already says that there's no limit to the number of one-hour periods in a 24-hour period. If you want to go out there five times a day and stand there for an hour while the, while the cats eat, then that's your prerogative as the manager of a cat colony. That's what this ordinance allows for, but what it doesn't allow for is leaving food out on a plate for hours and hours and hours on end, which then draws in the vermin and other animals, and, and those other animals might not just be mice and rats and squirrels, they might actually be predatory animals that will then kill the cats in the cat colony, like coyotes, which we have a problem with doing to these feral cat colonies.
But Township Mayor, you were at one of the committee meetings where the first iteration of this initiative was to just limit feeding to one hour, and you at that meeting said that is not a practical, applicable, overseeable, enforceable provision.
No, I disagree with that statement.
That you didn't say?
I disagree. In fact, I'm the one that changed the verbiage of this portion of the ordinance to how it reads now.
Okay.
I'm the one that changed that, and that's not how it originally was written. And what I said was that it needs to be monitored, and yes, we could if need be, if there was an abuse where there were people leaving food out for extended periods of time in violation of this ordinance, that we could then conduct monitoring of that location to determine who it was that was leaving the food out, because that would be an unregistered colony that would be doing that.
But this is under the registered colony section.
Well, and I understand that it's under registered colony, but they still need to be held to the same standard as an unregistered one that we're looking to, to cite for a violation.
But we, yeah, we had struck it then, so our memory on that is different. So I'll amend, I'll make a motion to amend, and so it'll read, "Food must be on a plate slash bowl and not scattered on the ground in a way to not attract," and then you could insert the things you're trying to avoid with the one-hour.
I did by inserting an hour.
I understand, but you're not a voting member, and it's my.
I understand that, but I'm the one that proposed it.
I get that. Thank you.
Okay. How about if we split the baby and make it three hours?
You're, I.
If you're asking, I don't see.
Asking the mover.
Oh, the mover.
So what I think we should try to do is, is what I've heard from folks that are, A, you know, going through the burden of registering the colony, they're paying cash out of pocket to spay and neuter and vaccinate, to ear-tip, photograph, and register, that the way and the behavior of cats, none of us here are experts on that, would require a larger time period. It seems like folks that are doing that and taking those steps and being responsible know best what is required, that we might just meet them at their desire to do the right thing in the right way to avoid the outcome we're trying to avoid, which would be attracting vermin or nuisance or, you know, any of the other unintended consequences of a feeding. In such a case that that wasn't, then the enforcement officer would tell them that that's not okay, it doesn't meet the ordinance, rather than an arbitrary timeframe that, from the folks that have experience with this, are saying that's not appropriate. That, that's where I'm going with this, because one hour clearly is, you know, from the folks that have experience, not going to suffice. And I don't know that three hours will, and it'll solve any of the problems.
So I'm advised by our attorney that it's okay if we strike something like the one hour, but if we start adding new language, that becomes a substantive change. We have to reintroduce. So I'm, this has been delayed quite a bit, so I wouldn't want, I personally wouldn't want that to happen. So what about three hours?
Well, isn't that a substantive change?
That's my, and once again, that's my concern, Mayor. If we start to.
I think that's a substantive change.
If we, if we strike a sentence, I'm okay with that, but if we start to add, if we start to add new provisions.
Or altering what's currently in the ordinance.
So if we change one to three hours, that's a substantive change?
Yes, sir, it is.
I withdraw my question.
And I'll withdraw my amendment to the motion, so that striking the one-hour timeframe is on the table.
So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Mayor, I just want to make sure I'm understanding, because when I asked the attorney and the manager chimed in, I thought it was pretty clear that the concerns of the people that understandably are bringing their concerns, that they're covered, that if they feel that the cats think it's efficient, and they're registered capable colony people, I, again, I know we can't bring them up here, but, and I'm sensitive what my colleague to my left here is concerned about, but I think it's, from what I heard, it's, it's already taken care of by way of that hour could be repeated as the cat colony, I'm going to say, expert or knowledgeable person are shaking their heads, so I'm wondering if we're making this more complicated with the leniency is already built in as far as starvation. I wouldn't want, I wouldn't be saying this, I wouldn't vote for it if I thought it was going to lead to starvation for a cat, but I'm hearing you have outs by the way it was described by our attorney.
Can I, can I suggest maybe a procedural way out of this, which is adopt the ordinance as it is, put in, put another ordinance on for next meeting, and then we can discuss that issue with the appropriate people and decide whether or not you want to go forward with it? That's one way to do it.
Well, there's a motion now.
Yeah, so there's a, I mean, there's a motion, but the council. Yeah, so there's a, I mean, there's a motion, but the councilman took your point.
Yeah, no, and, and I remember when this first came up, I said, "Let's move it along and agree to a one-hour revisit it." And the councilman here mentioned that again tonight, and, and I, I think that's, I'd be more in line with moving it forward as is and revisiting it based on that, because I think we're going to get input in various ways that makes us rethink, not necessarily change, but revisit it. So to me, I'm good with just revisiting it a year. And if there's a crisis that emerges, we're obviously all here concerned, bring it to us. We're not going to, you know, we don't have to wait a year. But I'm very curious. I think this is going to move well as is. That's my commentary. I'm ready to vote.
And, and can we correct the spelling of cats in the title? It's bad that we can't spell cats.
We could also leave it in-
Spell kates.
We could also strike it and add something else back.
So we are apparently regulating dogs and kates.
Right, I mean, there's-
It's kittens.
The logic-
It's kittens.
The logic of, of striking it and then taking up a timeframe or another criteria would be the same as leaving it and then amending it. Either way would still leave us time to fix it, right? So the, you know, the, the way it's written now, it says that the bowls and, and plates must be discarded after one hour. So I'm assuming if you use glass or stainless steel, you don't really mean that. Probably could be washed, but okay.
Or removed.
We're only using paper. You know, what my, but I'm not withdrawing the motion. It has a second, would be to just strike that sentence. Then the next meeting, we can come back with language we feel is sufficient for a time period or another way to describe or restrict to the, get to the problem.
Any other discussion on the amendment?
The motion, the amendment is, the, the amendment is to strike the, the one-hour timeframe.
The move.
Let's move the original.
He's seconded.
Yeah, that's, that's the motion that's on the table.
That's, that's the motion. Is there any other discussion on it? Madam Clerk, we are voting on the motion. Yes means to strike, no means to leave it in.
Councilman Embarrasson?
No.
Councilwoman Francois?
I was late, so I don't, I'm not following any of this discussion. I abstain.
Councilman Karazi?
No.
Mayor Kramer?
No.
Councilman Onijaka?
No.
Councilmember Potasnik?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Dean?
No.
Councilman Vasanella?
No.
Councilman Wright?
Yes.
So the amendment fails, but I do encourage Councilman, Councilmember Vas, Potasnik to come back with new language. Do we have any more discussion on the original ordinance?
Mr. Mayor, I don't have discussion, but I would like to address a question that was asked at the original public portion by one of the members that, that she asked if, a question about this, but it was not under the, the period of time where they were public comment on this particular ordinance. And that question was, you know, are they at risk of prosecution in the event that people dump cats to the colony? And the answer is no. If you read the ordinance, this is, this is not about penalizing people who have a registered colony. This is about getting people to register the colonies and maintain them appropriately. You know, while we appreciate that, and you know, I just, while I was sitting here, we have 130 cats in our shelter right now as we speak tonight, okay? Thirty-eight of them are kittens, if anyone's interested in adopting one, all right? But, you know, and I heard mention from, I believe, the gentleman from TNR about that, that we euthanize our cat. We don't, all right? So that's why we have 130 of them in our shelter. What you said is cats that would be brought in. In fact, this ordinance doesn't address anything like that. What it says is if there's a problem cat in a colony, it needs to be addressed, and that the last, the last way of addressing it is for it to be trapped by our shelter personnel, all right? But there is no reason why you would be concerned if you registered a colony and people dumped cats and, and added to your colony, that you would somehow be prosecuted for it. Okay, that's not the, that's not the purpose, the spirit, or the letter of, of this particular ordinance. So I just wanted to let you know that.
And in general, the manager and I have often discussed this in relation to other things in town, such as code violations, et cetera. Our goal is to have people adhere, not to find them. So I, you know, we're not writing it in the law, but I know Katie, and Katie's not going to go knock on someone's door and give them $100 fine. She's going to say, gee, this is a problem, this is how you address it, can you do that for me, et cetera. That's just the way it, it kind of works.
And, and it actually was, so Katie, so most of you have used her name in addressing this council tonight. So Katie was the impetus behind this, because Katie has been frustrated for her entire career by people feeding cats covertly in neighborhoods where it's not appropriate and creating nuisances throughout neighborhoods. So this is not done without her input and, and kind of blessing. I just want people to know that, too.
We need a motion to adopt. We don't have one yet.
Should we have a discussion before we go?
No, I don't think we have.
We did, we had a motion to open the public here.
There's no motion to adopt.
Shame on me for not making a motion.
We're still in order. Yes.
Shame on me. Do we have a motion to adopt?
So move second.
Moved in second. Any, any discussion?
It's my call, to remember.
Madam Clerk.
Councilman Embarrasson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Councilman Karazi?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Onijaka?
Yes.
Councilmember Potasnik?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Dean?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
Councilman Wright?
Yes.
Thank you. It passes. I invite Councilmember Potasnik to come up with amendments. We are now back to the schedule. We are at number nine, council comments and reports. Mr. Karazi, Dr. Karazi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had the Advisory Board of Health meeting, and we had two special guests from Sister to Sister organization. Sister to Sister organization, which their office is located on Hamilton Street, has been helping thousands of women and even men with breast cancer. So not only education-wise, but if there's anybody who has breast cancer, they can always reach out to them. And they have been helping them with their support, the financial support, as well as helping them, directing them to the right places for treatment and also testing. So I know Councilwoman Francois has been involved quite a bit with them, and I'm sure next month she will probably going to be talking about it for the Sister to Sister organization. So the, also, this month, actual September, is Hunger Action Month. And so please remember that we have a lot of people in our community that they are worried about where they're going to be getting their second meal. And this month is just to raise awareness and ask people to support activities that feed our neighbors. And one of the organizations that does that well in our community, they have been doing that for over 50 years, is our food bank. So if you'd like to volunteer or help, you have the opportunity to do that. And, Mr. Mayor, that's what I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Onijaka.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I was privileged to attend the Sierra Leone graduation ceremony last week. The occasion actually demonstrated our relationship, the Franklin relationship with African descendants, including Sierra Leone. The occasion was well-attended, which shows our relationship with, with the community. I, as an African descendant, I will continue to bridge the relationship between Franklin and Sierra Leone. And I've worked very closely with them, and everything is moving fine, as regards what Agnes said last time. So that is one. Two, secondly, I'm recommending a bump in West Minister Road in Somerset Park. Although they have a road bump on the, on the left side of it, but still, we need more, because the speed on that road is very, very astronomical. So we need to do something before it gets offhand. Mayor, that is what I have.
Thank you. Councilman Embarrasson.
I yield my time to my colleague.
I have no report.
Thank you. Councilwoman Francois.
I do have one report, and that is for, from the Municipal Alliance Against Alcoholism and Drug Abuse. I was asked to make an announcement that on next Thursday, September 18th, there will be a grand opening at the Franklin Township Hub at 873 Hamilton Street. It's going to be a grand opening, a ribbon cutting. There are going to be speakers, light refreshments. This is a significant event here in Franklin Township. They've been doing some work also over at First Baptist as well, First Baptist Church. So it's for, for community in connection, for prevention and recovery. They're having a grand opening ceremony from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And the, at 1:00 PM, our Commissioner Director, Janelle Robinson, will also be officiating this ceremony. So I'm sure the mayor and some of the council people will be there. I'll be out of town, so I can't attend, but hopefully, this is all part of the stigma-free initiative that we have going on here in Franklin Township. I apologize for being late. I had a big conference today on my job. It was all the way down in Battery Park. Took me that long to get here. So, but I'm here now. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I hope they fed you. Councilman Vasanella.
Thank you, Mayor. Glad we got the cat ordinance finished. See how that goes. School's in session, obviously, so drive slow, extra slow when you see in buses. I wanted to mention to the public, not the biggest thing we're doing, but we have a public hearing, and anybody who has any interest, this is having to do, on September 25th, having to do with, I believe it's Sunoco Company, Sun Company, asking for a permanent easement, temporary and a permanent easement to relocate pipe valves and other maintenance equipment to better maintain one of our underground pipelines. We have a bunch of underground pipelines running all through to our township. And this is one, and they're asking for the township to give them some space to implement this plan in Castleton Park. It's part of our open space, part of our park. So there's a public hearing, there'll be a public presentation. That's the 25th that's coming up in a couple of weeks, from 6:00 to 7:00. And I believe there'll be time for public input. So please come out and voice your opinion. And I also wanted to mention Franklin Day, which is a big day for Franklin. It's 12:00 to 5:00 this Saturday. Okay, I'm sorry, someone, oh, that's right, the mayor mentioned in the beginning. I forgot, that was a while ago. But worth mentioning again, the weather's good. It's going to be incredible festival. Thank you, Mayor. I believe that's, that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Potasnik.
On September 24th, I could have done this in announcements, but I had to pick a date, I'll be having an informational meeting following up on the Griggs Town Causeway study that the county did to look at the recommended plan for the causeway. Just the folks missed the meeting on July 1st, which was one day before my birthday, three days before America's official birthday. The plan is to keep the one-lane bridge, the Griggs Town Causeway, and on each side of the bridge to put a signaled traffic light that is timed and synchronized for northbound traffic, then southbound traffic, then westbound traffic, and then going through. And then at the intersection of Griggs Town Causeway and Canal Road, to put in a stoplight there as well that would be synced up with the causeway. And then at the corner of Bunker Hill and Canal Road, to put a three-way stop. The council sent a resolution to the county and asked them to consider a three-way stop sign at Griggs Town Causeway Road and Canal Road. And the mayor, the manager and I had a presentation from the county where they redid a little traffic study on what that would do. And we want to present that on September 24th at 7:00 PM. There's a little animation that shows the insufficiency of the stop sign and just get input from residents based on that extra effort that they did, given our feedback. And that'll be via Zoom, and we'll have more of a Zoom link through the, I guess we'll put it on the website for the calendar entry, and I'll be sending a letter out to affected neighbors in the area to get their feedback before we take any official action on it from the council, which would be scheduled for the 30th, our next meeting. And that's just a little announcement from, from my part, particularly for folks in Ward 1, but lots of folks travel that way. If you're interested or have comments, please, please share them. I'm very interested in your feedback. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Carl Wright.
I'll be, I'll be kind of quick with this. Mark Harris and I have been working on a program, actually two, through SCAP, Somerset County Action Program. And the reason why we work through SCAP is that from a council perspective, councilman perspective, it's a lot easier to disseminate information going through a local organization. That information spreads out quicker and gets to the people that need to have it. Now, one program we have involves teens. And what that program does, it allows the teen to talk about problems and issues, and read what the blurb rewrote. Teens Speak teaches us the necessary skills to open up the lines of communication between parents, caregivers, and teens focused on the topics of sex, mental health, and substance abuse. Now, through that program, we learn healthy living, fosters growth to help teens make safer decisions, and informs decision as they continue into adulthood. Now, the time and date of the location is, we have two, is September the 16th and 18th, which is right around the corner, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM by Zoom. Now, if you go to both sessions, there's a $25 gift card for you. But you definitely need to go to SCAP, and you type it in, and it'll pop up for you to be a part of that program. Our second one that we have is financial literacy. Now, this is for anybody. Anybody who wants to know anything about financing, this is it. From creating a budget to maintaining a budget, how to get a loan, how to plan for future endeavors. Join us for a dynamic and informative workshop designed to help take control of your finances. Dirty glasses don't work. Control your finances with confidence and clarity. Whether you're just starting out or looking to sharpen your money management skills, this workshop offers practical tools, practical tools, tools, and expert guidance to support your financial journey. Now, this program starts on September the 16th at 4:00 or 5:00 Hamilton Street in Somerset from 6:00 to 7:00 PM. You need to come out and learn what it is and how it operates for you, because moving forward, when you get married, you got to have that two-person team come together and become one. And this is one way to do it. Now, we hold it in Spanish and English. English is held the third Tuesday of every other month, and Spanish is held on the fourth Tuesday of every other month. I believe in doing so, we make better financial decisions, and we can move forward. The last thing is something that the mayor asked for, which was dates, and I blew right past it because I was looking for it. It's time again to support the sister- It's time again to support the Sisters Walk Run for Life. Every month during the month of October, every contribution, no matter how small, brings us closer to our goal of the annual walk run, which is breast cancer. Sister to Sister is excited to host the 20th Annual Walk Life For Run, our biggest fundraiser of the year. It'll be held at Johnson Park River Road Grove 4 in Piscataway, New Jersey. Now, you can do this virtually or in person. Now, Ms. Dorothy Reed, she has a team to honor the survivors of the, and in the memory of 49 board members that they've lost to breast cancer. And there's a link on there for you to join her team. Now, if you don't want to do any of it above, you can donate order, form a team, make a donation, and ask a friend to give. Now, the reason breast cancer is important to me is not because of that I've had breast cancer, it's cancer period. If you don't nip that ugly thing in the bud, it can sneak up on you. And that's one thing you don't want. My cancer almost snuck up on me, but the problem that cancer had is I do get checkups regularly, so it couldn't do damage. Rectal cancer, prostate cancer, for men, if you don't get yourself tested, it'll sneak up on you, and before you know it, it's spread everywhere. And then everybody comes back crying, but you missed it. And don't be like me, have chemotherapy and sit next to a toilet bowl, and that becomes your friend. So you don't want to do that. I ran through it, and that's about it. I'm sorry about the dirty glasses, but I just can't see.
Thank you, Councilman Wright. Deputy Mayor Sheba Uden.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few things. So the first big one that I do want to mention is that we had an issue that was brought up to us by one of our resident on August 12th. And in response to that, we are urging our legislature to encourage ADA, and that's actually under Resolution 25400 and AH. And that is urging New Jersey Legislature to provide that clubhouses at adult communities be added to the definition of places of public assembly which require onsite automated external defibrillators, AEDS, and designated trained personnel. So wanted to make sure I mentioned that. It's in the consent agenda. And we are working on an event that's going to come back in October, so I didn't mention it today, but it's moving the park. We did it last year, we had a great turnout, and we're planning on doing it this year as well. So more to come on the next council meeting. Today, actually, at the Senior Center, at 1:30, there was a property tax seminar that was held, and that was in response to help some of the seniors that had any concerns on filling out their templates or the booklet that they received in their mail. So that was a seminar that was held by the town. In August, I had a couple health series seminars, and one of them was related to Medicare 101. The gentleman was here, and he actually is no longer there, but they had presented, they come from a company called Senior Health Navigators. And Medicare, as most of you may or may not know, October 15th is your enrollment period, that's when it starts. So, you know, there's a lot of things that are being sent out today on Medicare and programs, so make sure you read everything on Senior Health Navigators. The person that was here, their company basically helps with navigating, with all the questions and customizing programs that meet your needs. So we had them come out and do a seminar at the Senior Center, and you guys can also reach out to them. Again, their name is Senior Health Navigators. Same with that, is having their 9/11 ceremony at their church at 6:30 this Thursday, and that's something that I plan on attending, and folks, if you would like to attend as well. RideWise Community had a roundtable that myself and Councilwoman Francois attended, and they are a nonprofit organization, and they had basically kids from our town and various other places submit videos about community safety and how to, you know, just brainstorming on some safety awareness around sidewalks and schools and driving and et cetera. That was very interesting. And, you know, surprise, and it's actually no surprise to us that, you know, three of our kids won the videos, and it was really nice to see how they created it. You know, you step back sometimes, we're so involved in the weeds of everything in the council and government, so when you step back and see how the kids are visioning the community and the safety, and you step away and say, oh, well, that's something new, we should, you know, let's put that in. So very interested, and I think they have their videos on public social media platforms. You know, if you have a time, take a look at it. It's from RideWise, Community Safety, and again, like I said, very interested to see that. And so I want to call out Kennedy Price, Arav Parek, and Sesh Nelthula, who won the video contest. So congratulations to you guys, and they are all in Franklin schools. Last thing that I wanted to mention is we had our 9/11 ceremony today, and a lot of you guys went, and I just want to remind folks, I just want to kind of put the names back out there, folks that we honor and remember every year. John Colins, Stephen Joseph Ganesh, Ladka, Venisha, Richards, Jeffrey Robinson, and Cheryl Razanbham, so we will never forget, and we will continue to remember and honor and pray. Thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you. For my part, our IT Director sent me an email reminding people that you can find out about Franklin 250 by going to the website and adding to the URL Franklin250. So it's Franklin, T W P N J dot org slash Franklin 250. And you can sign up for emails and learn more about this celebration. Thank you, Krista. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one quick thing to add to tonight's meeting. Mr. Walker brought up a program that actually the person seated there behind you on a catty corner is the one responsible for it, Director Mayweather from the Police Department. So, but I just wanted to let everyone know exactly what Mr. Walker was talking about. The program is called Franklin Community Connections. It's a program that's intended to aid families of people with Alzheimer's, dementia, people who have relatives that are on the autism spectrum. And what it is, is it's a GPS-enabled smartwatch that the person wears so that the family can track them. A lot of people who are in early stages of dementia, Alzheimer's, don't necessarily need full-time supervision, they're still functioning members, but, you know, with the oncoming of forgetfulness, they sometimes wander off, and then the Police Department and other emergency services are tasked with trying to find them. They may be driving a car down the New Jersey Turnpike, right? That's not, that's where silver alerts came from, right? Was in those circumstances where someone that has that issue but is still functioning goes off and doesn't know where they are. So it not only does a tracking for GPS, but it also allows for two-way communication. And it does not have to be something that the person does something to the smartwatch to be able to hear and also to be able to communicate with their family member. And that information is done on an app that the family member has on the phone, and it can also be shared with law enforcement and emergency services. So that, it is called Franklin Community Connections. It's available to people who live here in Franklin Township who are interested in it, and if someone wants to find out more about it, they should either send an email to CRB Programs, all one word, no dots or dashes, CRBprograms@franklinnj.gov, or call the police non-emergency number 732-873-5533, extension 3124. That is the Community Relations Bureau who is overseeing this program. And it is so new that this is the first council meeting that we were able to announce it. It just came online, I think on the 22nd of August. So thank you for bringing it up at the public portion. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, just one question.
Yes, sir.
Could you, since you brought that up, would you just tell me about the Blue Angel Program?
So the Blue Angel Program is where you can arrange to have what is basically a real estate lockbox secured outside of a family member's home, and the combination is only, is kept on file in a secure location with the Police Department, so that if the police need to gain access to a family member's home because they're, you know, it's most often elderly family members, you know, they fall, they can't get up, they can't get to the door, this allows the Police Department to go there and gain access by opening up the lockbox in which the homeowner's keys are located so that they can get in, and that's the Blue Angel Program. That was one that I started, a long time ago. Yeah. So, yep.
Next item is council discussion item. There are none. Next is approval of the minutes I present.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to amend the agenda.
All right. Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion if we can amend the agenda so we can do the Week of the People commendation presentation.
I'll second that.
Moved in second, and all in favor, say aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried.
Okay. Come on up, Councilman Wright.
That's you.
Me?
Councilman Wright.
Right, Councilman Wright.
I'm sure they'd welcome you, Councilman Pataznik. Come on, is this on? Can you hear me? It's on? Okay. Come on up, Mr. Percy and Andrew from the Committee of the Week of the People. And Councilman Wright, you're on the Week of the People too. That's why I told you to come up here. Okay. Like he doesn't know what's going on. And would you come up Sergeant Daly and Police Director Quivella Mayweather?
I hope we have COTS available for the executive session.
I have my, I have an appointment at the Cancer Institute tomorrow at 10:00.
So, a lot of people don't know this, but we have a Week of the People event, and this has been going on for 54 consecutive years. I don't know any celebration in Franklin Township that has been going on for 54 consecutive years. The Week of the People started back by the Somerset Community Action Program, and typically, a while ago, it was a whole week of events. It's gotten scaled down because some of the members are somewhat aged, has ate or have gotten a little bit old. And so Mr. Percy here, he was the one that started the Week of the People, that's why he's here today. He's the founder. He's been keeping it going all these years, even though we've been struggling to get some young people to get involved. And one of the reasons why we're doing this commendation tonight is Sergeant Ken Daly, he's with the PBA, and we would not have the community event that we have for the children, where we have free food, we have free games, we have free ice cream, cotton candy, hamburgers, hot dogs. But more importantly, the PBA, they give us book bags. And this year, they gave us like over 500 book bags. We had so many book bags, we didn't have enough people to give out the book bags to. So I took them over to the youth center. The turnout was light this year. But Sergeant Daly has been very, very instrumental in making sure every year that we get those donations. And the kids line up, and it's very important to the community, not only do they donate the book bags, but they also donate materials in the book bags as well. And it's, it may seem like a small thing, but to the community, to those kids that get those book bags when they line up for them, it means a lot to their families as well as the children. So I wanted to acknowledge, even though it's been going on for a long time, I wanted to acknowledge Mr. Sergeant Ken Daly from the Franklin Township Police Department and PBA for your commitment, dedication, and contributions to the Week of the People Back to School festivals in the community. For 20 years, he's been doing that. So we're way, way overdue for acknowledging Sergeant Daly. And I'm happy that he's here tonight so we can give him this award. And then the other thing, I'm going to stop talking and let everybody else talk. We also wanted to present to our Public Safety Director for the Franklin Township Police Department, Quivella Mayweather, a recognition and appreciation for your devotion and commitment to law enforcement and the community. We could not have a safe Week of the People event if it wasn't for our Police Department making sure that things go well over there. And it's been a wonderful opportunity. There were years ago when it was somewhat prohibitive for the Week of the People to have our events because we had to pay a lot of money for police protection, but through her leadership, she has really made the community, the Police Department, a part of the community. So they come over and they enjoy the festivities with the kids as well, and it's been a great, great opportunity for the Week of the People. It certainly has helped us in terms of budgeting, having the fact that we have police there that are part of the community, that are part of community events, that the kids know, that participate in the Week of the People as well. So our Police Director is going to be leaving us, and I want, it would have been very hard for me not to say we need to acknowledge her as well for all the things that she's done to change the culture and to include a lot more diversity in our Police Department in Franklin Township. So I just want to thank you for your leadership and your stewardship and all that you've done for the Week of the People as well, Director. I think Percy should say something.
Hello, thank you. First, I want to be able to thank the council for having us set this establishment to give these awards. I do have a few people I need to thank also that, you know, was involved with most of the events, like, well, Franklin Township in general. It was in a lot of different segments throughout the years, you know, fighting battles of getting money and stuff like that, and we had gotten cut. You know, a lot of the money had gotten cut when it first, when it first ended, and then we worked our way back to now. And I just want to thank a few people, organizations like the Hamilton Street Business District. They are sponsors and our partners. And the other is the Robert Wood Johnsons, they donated bags to us, they do toys and stuff like that for Christmas things and stuff like that, so. And I'd like to acknowledge them as well. And the Somerset Community Action Program, which were always involved, and we had split up, and during the time that we had money issues, and it was the community that asked myself and two other people that helped start, started back up, Alvin Fair and Milo Thompson. And we also want to thank Park and Rec for doing what they do as far as helping guide us through the, you know, the rough times and stuff, and sponsoring. And most of our sponsors become partners, and what we're And what we're trying to accomplish is our theme, community and unity. So that's what's been happening by communities, organizations that help with us as far as the Youth Center with volunteers and things like that. So I just want to make sure we acknowledge all of them. And we're looking for more people. We really need some volunteers to help out and everything and watch it grow. And that's about it for me. Thank you all for coming out.
Kimberly, Council, thank you very much. I appreciate this. It's a very nice recognition. Although it's got my name on it, it's a representation of the entire Franklin PBA, all the men and women that work for us and come to work, excuse me, protect this community every day. It's a great, it's a great organization. Love helping them out, Week of the People. Percy, love working with you, coordinating every year. As soon as my kids get out of school, it's not more than a week. Kimberly's reaching out, reminding me that I got to start working on backpacks. So I don't have much time to start enjoying the summer, but it is fun. I appreciate that call every day, or every summer, rather. And again, Percy, thank you for coordinating with every year where we're dropping these off at to get into the kids because that's what's most important. I happen to have just left the youth center. There are a few backpacks left there. Some are the full mesh breathable backpacks. So if it would help animal control, they would double as a good cat carrier. We can adopt the cat, get a mesh backpack, you know, kill two birds with one stone. So contact me at the Police Department if you'd like a backpack to go along with your cat adoption. All right? Thank you, everybody.
Real quick, I just want to say thank you for this award. I know when I first started with Franklin, I was told uniforms stay away. But, you know, I pushed back a little bit because guess what? We are the Police Department. We wear uniforms and we are part of the community. And we're there to protect and serve. And it's not the uniforms, it's the people that's in them. And I think our police officers have proven that they want to be part of the community, whether they're wearing a uniform or not. So that's what we expect from them. So I appreciate you welcoming us. And, you know, I hope this tradition continues. I don't see it stopping 54 years. Wow, okay. I'm not going to say that. But I appreciate this. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
So time for the minutes. I introduce the minutes, the work session, regular meetings of April 23rd, June 24th, July 8th, and August 12th. And the executive session, minutes of May 13th and August 12th. Do we have a motion on the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections? Any discussion?
Councilman Embarrasson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois? Councilman Karazi?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka?
Yes.
Councilmember Potasnik?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Udine?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
Councilman Wright?
Yes.
Okay. Time to pay the bills. Warrants in the amount of $7 million, $74,227.09 on September 9, 2025 are presented to the Township Council for payment. Do we have a motion on the minute, on the warrants?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Anyone like to pull an item or question an item? Madam Clerk?
Councilman Embarrasson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois? Councilman Karazi?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka?
Yes.
Councilmember Potasnik?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Udine?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
Councilman Wright?
Public hearing and adoption on second reading. We've already done item A. Item B, ordinance 4476-25, an ordinance of the Township of Franklin authorizing the acquisition of the Franklin Somerset First State Squad Block 352.67910. And 11, on the official township tax map of the Township of Franklin is presented for public hearing and final adoption. Public hearing has been noticed as required. I ask unanimous consent to open to the public. Hearing note dissent. We're open to the public on this item only. Seeing no one coming forward, ask unanimous consent to close the public portion. Without dissent, public portion is closed. Do we have a motion to adopt?
Second.
Moving in second. Any discussion? This is to-
So this is the mayor, Mr. Mayor, this is the property at 179 Girard Avenue? That we're talking about, right? Yes, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. All right. No other discussion? Madam Clerk?
Councilman Embarrasson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois? Councilman Karazi?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka?
Yes.
Councilmember Potasnik?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Udine?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
Councilman Wright?
Ordinance 4476-25, an ordinance amending the municipal code of the Township of Franklin County of Somerset, State of New Jersey, more particularly Chapter 384, Water Article, four, thank you, Water Rates and Meter Charges, Section 384-12, Quarterly Consumption Charges for Apartment Complexes. The foregoing ordinance is presented to Township Council for adoption on first reading, posting, publication, according with law, and public hearing and final adoption at a meeting of the Township Council to be held on Tuesday, September 30th, 2025, at 7:00 PM in Council Chambers. Do we have a motion to introduce?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moving in second. This is to correct a clerical error in the ordinance that we passed last month. Any other discussion?
Just one question. Is there any impact on the clerical error? Is it happening?
No.
No, okay. Thank you.
Short answer, and that's correct. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk?
Councilman Embarrasson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois? Councilman Karazi?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka?
Yes.
Councilmember Potasnik?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Udine? Councilman Vasanella? Councilman Wright?
Ordinance number, ordinance number 4477-25, an ordinance amending the municipal code of the Township of Franklin County of Somerset, State of New Jersey, more particularly Chapter 50, Police Department, Section 50-11, Promotion to Sergeant and Lieutenant. The foregoing ordinance is presented to Township Council for adoption on first reading and posting publication in accordance with law and public hearing and final adoption at the meeting of the Township Council to be held on Tuesday, September 30th, 2025, at 7:00 PM in the Council Chambers. Do we have a motion on this ordinance to introduce?
So moved.
Moving in second. For discussion, this is just cleaning up some housekeeping to get our ordinance to coincide with what we're actually doing. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk?
Councilman Embarrasson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois? Councilman Karazi?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka?
Yes.
Councilmember Potasnik?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Udine? Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
Councilman Wright?
Consent agenda. Items A through AH is listed on the consent agenda portion of this meeting. Are presented to Township Council for adoption. Do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Seconded. Anyone like to question an item or pull an item or discuss an item? Okay, I'm just trying to get to bottom. Okay, no further discussion. Madam Clerk?
Councilman Embarrasson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois? Councilman Karazi?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka?
Yes.
Councilmember Potasnik?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Udine?
Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
Councilman Wright?
Resolutions to be voted on separately. Resolution 25-401, resolution in support of Congresswoman Cheryl's plan to address utility costs. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Councilman Embarrasson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois? Councilman Karazi?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka?
Yes.
Councilmember Potasnik?
Yes. I was so excited.
Deputy Mayor Udine?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella? Councilman Wright?
Charles, it's nice to be you.
If you enjoyed that, you're going to love this. Full business, 2025 Forest Community. Permission vacancies? Does anyone have a nomination?
Mr. Mayor, I have one. We have a member in the Advisory Board of Health who, she's an alternate, and we like to move to the regular member. Her name is Mariora Chakureen. So she is, as I mentioned, alternate. But we have an opening as a regular member. We like to, I would like to nominate for regular member.
Anyone have a nomination for the same position? Anyone have a nomination for any other positions? We can do this by acclamation, madam? Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Congratulations. I have to listen to what I'm saying to know what I should do. Item number 19, executive session, Resolution 25-402. Authorize the executive session attorney-client privilege, Northeast Supply Enhancement Project, contract negotiations with PBA and CA, and potential open space acquisition. West Point Avenue Properties is presented to Township Council for adoption. Do we have a motion to go into executive session?
Second.
Moved in seconded. Madam Clerk?
Councilman Embarrasson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois? Councilman Karazi?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer? Councilman Oni Jaka?
Yes.
Councilmember Potasnik?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Udine?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella? Councilman Wright?
So we're about to go into executive session. After that, we'll be coming out. And the only business we'll be conducting will be coming out of executive session and adjournment. So taping will stop at this time.